Now, a couple more things.
All right, yeah. About the department-wide in-person harassment diversity training, in-person.
Well, if I can, just before that, I still think we need to get to the root of all of the issues and concerns. I do think that we should still conduct additional investigations, and I'm not necessarily pointing them at the chief, although he probably is included in that, but to see what else is going on. I have no problem going, as the mayor said.
I'm game with that. Let's lay it all out there.
With a third-party investigator, so that this way, we can come back, we know the issues, and we can come up with solutions. The current investigator is here. I'd at least like to see what she has to say or recommend.
I just figured out who she is.
So that, you know, we know what we need to continue to pursue.
Okay. Is she here? Where is she?
Rhea Chattergun is here. She's been sitting very patiently tonight.
We haven't had a 12 o'clock meeting in years, so I apologize.
Good night, everyone. My name is Rhea Chattergun. I was the investigator on the matter. I wrote the report that you guys have been debating all night. Just a little bit about myself for the public, because you don't know me at all. I...I'm sorry?
No.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for 18 years. I practice in the field of employment discrimination. I represent both employer and employees, and I conduct investigations, third-party investigations. I've conducted a number of investigations for a number of police departments in South Florida, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have. I know there were...there was one report regarding the limited scope of the text messages. During that investigation, there were some other issues that were raised by police officers who I investigate...who I interviewed during the investigation. Sorry, it's late. And there were some issues that concerned me, which is why I prepared a second correspondence addressing those issues and suggesting and recommending a continued investigation on those issues. The scope of my investigation with regard to the text messages, like I said, were limited. There were some issues that I did want to explore, but I didn't, because the scope was determine whether the text messages existed, whether they were sent, and to determine whether hostile work environment and/or discrimination was present. As been discussed tonight, the chief did admit to sending the text messages. What concerned me about the text messages was not just that they were sent, but the tone of the message. There were some portions of the messages that were included, specifically that the chief did not want to promote Lieutenant Marrero. I believe she's had a name change. I apologize. He did not want to promote her, and that he would demote her if he could. That was alarming to me, and I don't...let me say, I don't live in your city. I never Googled anything about your city before the investigation. I do that purposely, because I don't want to be influenced. And actually, today was the first day I found out that there was a no-confidence vote. I had no communications with the PBA president or anything like that. So today was the first day I found that out, sitting here in this meeting. You do have some issues within the police department that I think need to be investigated, whether it's me or another investigator. I do think, from a legal perspective, you want to look into some of those issues. That was part of my job, was not only ascertaining whether the text messages existed, but also to determine what liability, if any, there would be for the city. And so I think in order to give an opinion on that, a further investigation is needed.
May I ask what things you suggest we additionally look into? I know you had mentioned a couple of things in the report. Are there any other things that maybe weren't mentioned?
I prepared a second correspondence. I'm not sure if that's already public, been made public. But there was with Sergeant Blanton, the promotional exam, which you guys have already discussed tonight. There...I'll be very honest with you. There was a discussion with the K-9 unit and the promotion in that portion of it with a female officer, and that she had to go through additional hoops to get the same treatment as a male officer. So that was a little concerning, and I think it should be looked into a little bit more than I was given the opportunity to.
And do you think, and I don't want specific names or anything like that, but do you think, in fairness to the chief, that there's potentially other bad actors that the city needs to look at, or is it strictly...
I can't comment on that, because the scope of my investigation was the complaint towards the chief or against the chief, so I can't really comment on that. I mean, I will tell you, from interviewing the various police officers, that, you know, you have some other issues going on in the department that you guys have discussed here and that the residents have raised and the police officers have raised. So I can't really comment on that, because I don't have the facts for that, to support that.
Well, because I clearly read all of that. No one woke up that morning and decided to make the comment that we read, yet there was nothing prior to, to show me how that came about, because again, and I have no intentions of ever repeating what the comment was, but it was a standalone, and I didn't see what had been asked before that to have elicited something like that. And I think it's curious that if we're going to see some, show me all. You understand what I'm saying to you?
Yes, I understand, and I think you're referring to that one text message, which I won't repeat.
Yes, correct.
Prior to that, and I believe I produced the chain of text messages that I did receive.
I'm going to tell you that the way I got it, some of them were repeated constantly, but I didn't have a time or a date to know what really came. And that made it very difficult. The ones I never wanted to see again were over and over and over, and I had no context as to where it really belonged. But if I read it the way I read it, I should have seen something that brought up that whole subject, because again, I don't believe you just wake up in the morning and decide to make a comment like that unless somehow it was elicited from you or the other person was having a conversation that led to it.
I do think it was a conversation that led to it. I do believe the chain of text messages that I were able to obtain, and let me make it clear, I had to really seek to get those text messages. I heard Sergeant Horn get up here and talk about, you know, the releasing of the text messages. I did have to hunt those down, and that's why my investigation took a little bit longer than it probably should have. The chain of messages is a conversation between two people. One of those people, Sergeant Horn, happened to be Lieutenant Marrero's subordinate.
Subordinate, right.
And so the chain of text messages, as I read them, was Sergeant Horn making a comment about Lieutenant Marrero, and then that's where the comment came in.
And in fairness, I would have liked to have seen Sergeant Horn's comment, because as passionate as he was standing here, we needed to...
I do believe it's in that...
It's in the cloud.
Yeah.
It's in the cloud. I don't...I haven't been elevated yet, and I'm in no rush to get there.
I do believe those are in the additional text messages I attached.
All right, then maybe I'm missing something, because I sure as heck did not see what elicited that response. But I also have to know that having read just that section, not the second section, the addendum part, which is clearly only about one particular thing and a promotion, that...oh, that's...taxi's here. I didn't...that wasn't as offensive to me as the first part, for obvious reasons, because the second part was about someone who should never have said to a subordinate, "Congratulations, there's something coming," and they were in Barcelona when they heard that. So I got that, and I understood why that didn't happen, because someone did not retire. Nobody's fault, and I get the fact that the second time, it probably didn't happen because a list expired. And the third time, if I'm wrong, tell me.
Well, I think that's part of my recommendation for the second part, is why was that list allowed to be expired? And I think that needs to be looked into.
Okay.
To be fair.
Which has a lot to do with my...which has a lot to do with the way we do all of this.
With the context of it, correct.
Which would never have come to us otherwise, because it's just not part of our purview. It disturbed me that all of that came the way it came, because there were also text messages there that said to somebody, "Stop. I didn't have anything to do with it." Now, if that's not true, and that person had something to do with it, then we need to know that, too.
Correct.
But, yeah, just...
I don't have the answers to your question, because that's why I recommended an additional investigation.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Simone.
I think we need to keep her. She's already started, and to start with somebody brand-new is just going to open everything up again and take even longer. But I also think that we need to give her free rein to do a complete investigation and ask the questions and seek the answers that she wants to seek.
Let me just correct that. It's not "seek the answers I want to seek." It's...
That's not what I meant.
Well, get the...
Well, the problem is, I hear your residents, and so let me be clear. I've never met any of the commission. This is the first day I'm actually meeting them. This is...and I do this purposely when I do investigations, because I do want it to be a neutral investigation, you know? I don't have anything against Chief Galasca. I met him for the first time in the interview, and I explained to him during the interview, you know, "I'm going to have to say you wrote these messages, because I have them," and he understood that. So, you know, I want to be very clear that, you know, as an investigator, you don't have a dog in the fight, right? I don't live in your city. This isn't going to affect me regardless of the decision. Regardless of the decision, if you keep me to continue the investigation, I think even if you hire another investigator that comes in, they're going to have to read my report and sort of go from there, and any qualified investigator will be able to do that. My qualifications come from, I represent both employer and employees. I've represented cities before. I've represented employees who sue cities. So I do have that unique experience with that, and I think, you know, that's why your city attorney reached out to me.
Would you agree that regardless of who continues this, it needs to be beginning, a middle, and an end? And so if people have grievances, they need to have a timely amount of time to bring it forward, because I don't want to keep hearing about this five months later when somebody just thought of something new, that if indeed this is a deep-seated problem, we need to know about it.
Can I answer that, David? Okay.
I'm not saying anything.
My only comment to that is, based on my investigation, I will tell you that there is a deep-seated fear of retaliation within the department.
From whom?
From the police officers that I have interviewed.
No, no, I know, but from whom? From the chief? Or retaliation from whom?
Yes, yes, from the top, from the chief, okay? And so, you know, that always...and the police department, fire department, is very unique in their culture, because it's not a culture where you go complain against someone within the department. I think you saw the text messages that said, you know, "You broke bro code," or "You crossed the blue line." You see things like that when I do investigations. So I think putting a time limit, I mean, I'm sure you can, you know, we have statutes of limitations in different types of cases, that sort of thing. You could do that, but I think you need to be sensitive to your employees and then the particular agencies that you're working with, because there's different cultures within each agency.
No, I just meant with this one, when this goes on, I would like to hope that this something that comes from the investigation, but yet six months after it's over with, to have somebody say, "Gee, I forgot something that happened three years ago." There's got to be a beginning, a middle, and an end, so that some kind of decision is made without somebody saying, "I should have told you this," or you...
I mean, I would agree with that, in fairness...
Right.
...to the chief.
In fairness to everybody.
To everyone.
Including us sitting up here.
So, yeah, I mean, I do think that if you are going to continue the investigation, that maybe a statement be put out, that, you know, if you have a complaint, if something's going on, this is the time you're allowed to do it. I don't know what the charter says. I haven't reviewed your charter.
I have no idea.
All of that. So you'd have to get guidance from David on that.
And regardless of whether it's the chief or not, if there are some deep-seated problems that have been going on for 10 years, five years, we need to know. You know, I don't think for one moment it's all about him. I think there's been a culture for a very long time that either people have learned to live with, retired from, or whatever, or found themselves moving, having been upward mobility, and it didn't become a problem anymore. But I believe it's way more than just today or what I've read, because it has to be.
And I heard that today. Let me be just very clear. My investigation was based on this complaint.
No, I know that.
I did not look into what happened with the former chief.
No, I know that.
You know, former complaints, any other complaints. I wasn't even aware that there were any other complaints. My scope was very limited to this complaint.
It would just be my hope that if we continue to do this, we get to hear the deep-seated things that aren't about this, but people have been hanging on to for the longest time. That was my only comment.
Is there anybody...anybody else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for sitting here so long.
Yes, thank you.
So is there anything else?
Is there anything?
I would say that we should have something where we can implement some policy to try to...
And does that take a special meeting for us to do it, so we can all sit down together with the...
I think so. I think this is something that's definitely going to...
Sooner than later, very much.
Yeah, gonna be...
Policy we expect to...
And we just figure it out, you know, go by the complaints that we had.
I would also invite...
Oh, I would. I would. I would like for Mr. Skirvin to show up, and, you know, because I heard tonight that there's some deep concerns, but they're contract-related.
Well, and he needs...you know, what he has to have is seats on the table. This can't be done in isolation, whatever it is.
No, it's going to be a joint effort, and...
In terms of the investigation...
Yeah. I was going to make a motion.
Where do we go with that?
So I'd like to make a motion that we retain this investigator to investigate what she feels needs to be investigated in regard to this case.
Joanne, I'll second.
I'm going to speak on that. I don't mind the investigation. However, I'm going to be very candid, as candid as I can, because I am. When I found out that it was our attorney's firm who knew this woman, that was a bad start.
Why?
Leave that to your imagination. Second is, I did a little background on Ms. Rita.
Rhea.
Rita?
Rhea.
Rita?
Rhea.
Okay. And she's definitely pro-woman, which I get. I understand that.
Nothing wrong with that.
There's nothing wrong with it, but when you're investigating something with a hostile work environment with women, let's be a little bit more unjudgmental from the beginning.
Maybe we should get some trans people to do it, then. Is that what you're saying?
Trans people?
Is that what you're saying? I mean, that what, a guy can't do it, or a girl can't do it? I mean...
It's not what I'm saying, Ed.
What are you talking about?
Ed, I'm trying to be as honest as I am.
My head wasn't splitting up before.
I just asked for a fair investigation being done.
Yeah, none of us want anything that's unfair.
Okay, then from the beginning, let's start with someone new and start fresh. That's all I'm saying.
But then don't you have to bring them up to speed and slowly the process? Because it's a new person who has no clue, hasn't spoken to some of the people...
Well, I think that if we want to get this done right, I don't think that should be a time on it. I think it should all be investigated, but I think it should be fair. I mean, if you're going to look into, I mean, basically, the second part, the event or the supplemental, whatever you're going to call it, was about the hostile work environment for the women. I just heard a bunch of men talk tonight that are pissed. I didn't hear anything about hostile men in the environment. Just want to be fair. Ms. Rita?
Yeah.
Good job. Did a check on her. Pro-woman. I'm going to say anti-men, and I just think it would be more level playing field to do an investigation with somebody new.
Won't you please get up and answer that?
What's that?
I'd like her to get up and answer that.
She can answer it.
I'm not sure how to take that comment, "pro-woman."
Well, the groups that you're involved with, just want to tell the public?
The groups that I'm involved with? As far as law associations?
No, just in general.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but let me be very clear.
Okay.
I conducted a neutral, third-party investigation.
Okay.
There was nothing pro-woman about my investigation. My investigation was based on the facts, as I ascertained them, and then analyzed against the law, which is my specialty. I have been an employment lawyer for 18 years. I'm very good at what I do. But let me...I've never met David or Caroline before. I've worked with their firm, but I've never met David. I wasn't sure what that comment was about. But I was hired because of my qualifications. I also want to mention that two of the men that I interviewed, in addition to the women, specifically stated to me that they believed the chief had a bias against women, female officers. I think that's clearly put in my report. So it wasn't my opinion. I took the facts as I investigated them, and I wrote a report based on those facts. There was no bias on my end. I have investigated other police departments. I've investigated other police chiefs, similar complaints, more egregious complaints, and not found in anyone's favor. And again, I did not make any recommendations, if you read the report, on hiring, firing, suspension, because that is your job as the commission. So I reported the facts as I found them. To say that I am pro-woman, I mean...
It's not a bad thing.
I'm sorry?
It's not a bad thing.
It's not a bad thing. It is an opinion that you and I have not spoken at all, but I think, you know, it's sort of damaging to my reputation as an investigator for you to say that in a capacity as a mayor who hired me to conduct an investigation. And I'm not, you know, you may never hire me again after this, but I will say that is damaging to my reputation as an investigator, and I think you should be a little bit more conscious of saying things like that in your position as a mayor. And I will say, during the investigation, I did not put this in the report. I took it out of my report. I put it in, and I took it out. One of the things that was said to me by every single person I interviewed was that this was going to go nowhere, because you are friends with the mayor.
I'm sure you've heard that.
And I didn't think that was fair to put in the report, because I didn't...I don't know you. I don't want to disparage you, and that had nothing to do with the scope of the investigation. So I just put that to say, you know...I'm sorry? I reported the facts as they were told to me.
Okay, I heard you...
And I think any investigator is going to do that. Any person who does their job properly.
Okay, but I heard you say before you used the word "bro code" and stuff that...
Those weren't the text messages, sir.
I'm just saying...
That wasn't...those weren't my words.
I'm just saying. So getting back to the original investigation, you were asked to investigate the text messages, correct?
Correct.
So how did it go into all this other stuff? Was that asked for you to do, or did you just do that?
What other stuff?
The addendum or the supplemental pages?
Those were things that I determined during the investigation, facts that were told to me...
But were you asked...
That I felt that it was important that you knew.
Were you asked to do that?
No, I was not. And in fact, I conducted my investigation and then alerted your city manager and your city attorney that there could be potential other liability for the city, and I put it in a letter to alert you to that, because that is the proper thing to do.
And what were they, again, the liabilities?
So being sued.
Gender discrimination. You have a potential liability of gender discrimination, sir.
But now we don't?
Now you don't what?
I'm asking you. You put it in the report that there's possibility...
I don't know, because I haven't further investigated it.
Isn't it in the report, though?
In which report?
The summary?
The second report that Ms. Chattergun provided laid out a couple of factual instances where she's concerned about potential liability.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but she did not further that investigation, because that was not within her scope. So the words "potential liability" are there, but, you know, it all depends on what the texts are.
Which means it might be or it might not be. She hasn't gone on...
Correct, and that is just issue spotting for me as an attorney and as an investigator to say to you as the commission...
Look at this.
You may want to look at this.
You need to go further.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner Arcagiano.
I just want to get this moving. I think the city needs...and by the way, I want the investigation. I want to see all the pus come out.
Oh, jeez.
No, this is poisonous.
Oh, that's fine. It was just an analogy that I couldn't handle.
Well, I'm sorry. You know what? We got to bust this pimple, and we need to get this stuff out. Guys, tonight's a night of really good homages, or whatever you want to call them.
Horrible analogy.
Horrible, but you know what? You know what I'm saying. You know what I'm saying?
I know.
This stuff needs to come out. The only way we can clean this stuff up is if all of it comes out, and then we deal with it so that we can go move forward. So I have no problem with continuing the investigation, because I don't want anyone to ever say that we did not do our due diligence and didn't look into this stuff when we had an opportunity. And what...
Put your mic on.
With who? With the current firm to continue where they left off, or...
I don't have a problem either way. I like the report. I mean, not that I like the report, I mean, it was well-written. It wasn't full of a lot of opinion. It was filled with items. I want a fact-based report, not an opinion-based report, and so I don't have a problem with continuing with her, but I also don't have a problem going with somebody else. What I have a problem with is if we don't do a continuing investigation.
My gut is, continue it with her...
Okay.
And then, based on those findings, bring in a consultant, not an investigator, but bring in an HR consultant to let us know how to address the issues so that we could set the chief up for success.
Sold. I got it.
You know, it didn't go my way, but like I said in the beginning, I'm going to work with whoever I need to work with to bring this department and try to make everything work.
And you didn't think we were going to agree tonight, once it got started, huh?
If you need to bring in an HR consultant, what do you do with your HR director?
Well, listen, this is only a short thing. This is...
Come on, look.
We need outside eyes on this. We need outside eyes.
Because the HR person looks at discipline, and I'm talking about making policy recommendations, whether it's the hiring process, the civil service...
Someone explain to me what the director functions are in our HR department, if we're going to have to hire somebody to do that job. So maybe we need to look at the...
I just think that, well, when we've been in these situations before with internal investigations, there are always questions... investigations, they're always questioned by one side or the other.
That's right.
So if we finish the investigation, we continue it, we get the results, we hire an expert that can bring, we're the policymakers, but then can bring recommendations to us. And so we can work with the union, we can work with the chief, we can work with the city manager's office to correct those issues from a policy standpoint.
Make a motion and I'll second it.
You currently have a motion to have Ms. Chattergun continue the investigation that was started with respect to her supplement letter and anything else that comes up.
Second.
You did second.
Can I amend it to add?
It's been going on so long that I just want to get this...
So can I amend it to then, once that investigation's concluded, that we hire a third-party consultant to make recommendations on policies and procedures and other things that we're not experts in? We can better make those policies.
There's nothing to prohibit you from doing that once you get the investigation back. My recommendation should be you...
Is to wait on that?
Is wait on that, see what the investigation comes back with.
Okay.
I'm still seconding what you discussed because I think you made a good point.
All right. Aunt, your light's still on. Do you want to say anything?
So are you continuing with the person?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment again about the civil service board and the HR. We need to expand these...
Train, what type of training?
The oral exams. We need to figure out how to make...
You need to revisit the purpose of the civil service board. How's that?
Exactly.
Well, that's one part, but yes.
Yes. All right, so as long as we're good with that.
Commissioner Simone.
I am really confused as to how, from what the investigator said, how the people on the prevailing side are sticking with their original vote and not bringing this up for a new vote, seeing that there is a definite problem with the chief and with females, and it's not going to be solved by workshops. That's his personality, apparently. And that was made clear by the investigator. So how can you allow him to stay after what the investigator just got up and said? It is just completely baffling my mind.
And I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. I still think there's going to be issues in the end, but clearly, we don't have the support for that. And so I've got to go with the cards I'm dealt with at this point. But I do agree with you.
So, okay. So we have a motion on the table for a continuing investigation. I know, so I got to open it to the public.
Rich Alienello, I'm breathing with you guys tonight. I don't know if you, you should look at the books and see how much you have in there now to get this over with. We would like to get it over with. I know you people are doing the best you possibly can. I'm going to give you credit. As a citizen of Margate, by the way, folks, I lived in this city for 30 years, and I've seen a lot of people sit up there, and these guys are doing everything possible to get the fairest deal going for this gentleman.
For everybody.
For everybody. I mean, I'm just saying is if we spend more money and do more investigation, what more can we find? Can we find more? I mean, if more people have problems, is it going to make it better? No, it's going to make it worse. So can't we work with what we have? You know, it's 12:30, folks, almost. You guys want to go home, I know, but can we get this over with? Look at it. You've got five years up there. Just look at the information you have. Do we have enough to do this tonight? I would like to see the chief go home with at least something on his mind, and he says, you know... I mean, something to say, you know, let's, it's starting to materialize the way I want because I would say he's going to work with his union before we do anything else. I was a union representative. I was a chief steward for an airline, and I was international association machinist. And trust me, this man has to go through all the channels to work with his union 100%. You guys are trying your best to do what you can, but at the same time, when he makes his decision, he's going to go to his union and say, "Am I doing the right thing? Are we on the right track?" And I'm sure the union representative is going to say, "Let's see what we can do, and we're not finished yet." But, you know, I'm only telling you this from my past experience because, you know, I've never seen anything like this before, but, you know, working for an airline and being a chief steward, I had a lot of experience with different things going on. This is probably very, very much of a problem for you guys to work with, but if you can work it out tonight, let's do it. If not, do what you got to do.
Thank you, Rich. Is there anybody else next?
Donna Fellows, you want to say that he's against women? He's not against women. He hired 40% more since he became chief. He's promoted 30% more since he became chief. What is this against women? He's not against women. He's not against anybody, men, women, black, white, Chinese, transgender, nothing. He's not against that. Y'all need to see that. You're saying that he's against women. He's not. He's proved. He's got the facts that he's hired more and he's promoted more. Come on.
Thank you.
Tracy Van Linkle, what is it that we're looking for in this investigation? I mean, are we, are we going to, all the officers that did the no-confidence vote, are we going to pull all of their text messages and see if they said that chief was a dick or chief was an asshole or? I mean, where are we going to go with this? Everybody calling each other names? I don't understand. Where are we going to go with this? Because if you find one of the officers that wrote a text message that chief was a jerk or an asshole or whatever, what are you going to do to that officer?
Nothing.
Are you going to bring him up here and crucify him and terminate them? Suspend them with no pay? I don't understand what we're doing more of an investigation for.
Well, I think in fairness, it's, could be policy violations if there are other officers that have messages that didn't turn them in, that they knew about.
But are they going to turn in the whole message or just their part? Because the whole messages weren't turned in. Horn took out what he didn't want to send. You didn't see the whole thing. You can, you know, cut out what you don't want to send. So are they going to get the whole message or are they going to get everything? I don't understand why we're opening all this Pandora box. Margate's already, I mean, we're already on the scope. I mean, the carnival, everything else, everything else in Margate, and we got no restaurants. All the restaurants are closing. They're all leaving.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I mean...
Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, before we vote, guys, I'm just going to say the same what the residents just said. I don't even know where you guys want to go with this. Another investigation. We just, we just were told that the only text messages given were the ones that want to be given. They weren't full text messages. So I don't know where you guys want to go with this. You know, we're trying to be, working as a group here. We just decided to keep the chief for a little bit longer, see what happens, but yet again, now we're going to open up another can of worms, which I'm sure every union person here is going to have something to complain about. And what's that going to do? It's going to make it so they're going to be untouchable. This is a giant squirrel chase going in a circle. If you guys want to do something, I do not recommend the investigation. There's a process right now. If somebody's upset, whatever, go through the process. But to start a whole nother investigation, it's going to be a nightmare. I'm not going to support it, and you guys are going to be, you know what? Maybe we shouldn't have done this because it's going to be a mess. So that being said, we will call the vote.
Yes.
Is this or is this not something that you would recommend that we continue to do?
I wouldn't answer that.
I'm Diana here.
Well, I think from a legal perspective, from a liability perspective, whenever you have any potential, whenever you have, it brought to light that there's any potential or existing issue, you know, whether it's a cracked sidewalk, whether it's a faulty vehicle, whether it's a bad driver, whether it's a rogue employee, I think the city does have a legal obligation to look into that, to see what the issues are, and then if there's anything to come from that. If you don't conduct the investigation, you won't know. So that's...
But I have a question. We're here to ask for, we can ask for an investigation on the chief. This commission wants to do is do an investigation on everybody. Maybe that's your job and his job to do, not our job. It's really not up for us to do. We can't do nothing. When this information comes back and it's found that this officer said this and then, what are you guys going to do with it? You're going to tell Kale to take care of it? If you guys really want this done right, let Kale or let David do it. Let them ask for it. Let them do the investigation, and then, you know what? Report back to us. Because there's nothing we can do if this comes back rogue. What are you going to do?
Well, I believe that we have to approve the funding to conduct the investigation.
I didn't think this was about officers saying nasty things to other officers. I thought this was specifically...
I mean, the issues before you in the supplemental report that Ms. Chattergun provided are related to additional complaint regarding Joseph Galaski, chief of police. So to the extent that that is going to be investigated, that's under your purview because it's an investigation, the chief. The other issues that may come up, you know, with respect to any other officers...
Policy violations.
Policy violations, that's typically handled through Internal Affairs. Okay, so I don't play a role in that. City managers don't play a role in that. And the, you know, the hope is that through Internal Affairs, through the chain of command, that whatever issues are there are dealt with through their policies and procedures. So what you're voting on tonight is primarily with respect to this additional complaint that Ms. Chattergun prepared, and she'll, you know, if you authorize it, then she will conduct a more thorough investigation to identify the facts related to those two matters and bring that back to you for your review. I don't think that this motion is saying that she's going to conduct a whole investigation, the entire police department.
Or would I, or would I want that?
And I think if she comes, at the end of her investigation, she comes up with other issues or other recommendations, she may very well decide to put that in the supplemental report, and whether that's within your...
Where does it end?
Well, I don't know where it ends. I don't have a crystal ball.
But why start it up again? Why can't we just talk to the union and say, "You know what, guys? Anything happen in the last two months, we'll listen to it. Anything prior to that, don't want to hear it."
That's fine, but this relates to the chief, who is your employee. So that's outside...
I understand, but this has, it's a trickle-down period.
I understand. I understand. And I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you.
It's just going to be six more months of catastrophe. It's all this is. It's setting up for failure.
Well, if you don't disagree with him, then explain to me why I should do it.
Just explain to me why.
No, I, the point that, you know, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't say it's the end of it. But you have these two matters in this additional supplemental report that were provided to you related to the chief, and you are the body that supervises and disciplines the chief, so it's your, you know, it's your responsibility to decide whether or not to do that.
On these specific...
On these specific complaints.
Yes, those specific complaints.
Right.
Okay. I got it.
All right.
I got it.
All right, call the roll.
Mr. Kajano?
Yes.
Mr. Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Oserio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Rizano?
No.
Motion passed.
Is there anything else that you guys want to discuss while we're here?
No more new discussions. If I could just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know we don't all disagree up here in the, in the audience, but this is what makes our country great, is it gives us the opportunity to speak our minds, whether we agree with each other or not. And so I respect everyone's opinion. I respect, I don't agree with the decision tonight, but I respect it, and I'll do what I can to make sure that we can move forward.
We've all been on some end of a decision.
And bring proper changes. It wasn't a personal attack against the chief. I said it in the beginning, I'll say again, he's a nice guy, and no one, no one, no one is going to, I think, dispute that. And it's not, you know, an attack on any commissioner. I know sometimes the conversations tonight were a little heated, but I think we're just speaking in passion, and we all care about the city, and we all think that we were trying to do what we thought was right. So thank you for those of you that agreed with me. Thanks to those who didn't agree with me, but I've heard everyone, and I appreciate everyone coming tonight.
Thank you. I just want everybody to know that this, nobody's going to win at this. When this is all over, nobody's winning. It's not about winning. It's about the best for our city. We love our police department. We support them with everything they do. The residents love them. That's not going to change. I guarantee you. We just need to get better policy in place, better steps in place. Just make it transparent. That's all this is about. Everybody's a level playing field. We need to set new policy. But I can tell you what, we might have disagreed on things, but we're all here. I guarantee you for the best for our city and our residents and our staff. I don't know what else to say, guys. I just hope in six months from now, we're in a different spot. I'm not moving, I'm just saying we're just in a better position. We're all getting along and things are back to normal. But I got to tell you...
You want a healthier environment for the people.
It's not going to get any better if these text messages keep coming in. It's not. It's going to get worse and worse. So just something to consider. I understand you guys might be pissed. You have a text message, whatever, take it up in another way. This is the last thing I want to do, is come back here for five hours and just talk about text messages. We've all done it. We're all guilty of it. Everybody's done it. Just can't, can't keep it going. Aunt, go ahead.
I just wanted my last comment to be, listen, I go around the city talking constantly about how this is a city where people run to the police, not from the police. And I'll be damned if I have the police running from the police. We have to work this out. We can't have a police running from the police. It's got to, we've got to work together. We've got to make this work, and that's it.